Call the meeting to order. I invite you to join me in the invocation. Our heavenly Father, fill us with your Spirit and courage so that we might bring the gifts you have given to us to this meeting. We ask that you be with all who are sick or hurting from a loss. Grant them healing and compassion during a difficult time. We ask that you be with our students, teachers, and school personnel as we start another year. Lead and protect them in school, at home, and in their travels. Open our minds to the task at hand, our ears to each other, and our hearts to your will. Amen.
Amen.
Second item on agenda is approval of the minutes. Approval of July 10th regular session and July 10th closed session.
Sub moved.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a series of public hearings, and as I call these up, I will ask for anyone that wants to come forward and make comments for or against. The first one is ordinance 1720 to consider annexation of the property for Albemarle Corporate Center. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Hearing none, it being ordered to close the public hearing.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I need the entertaining motion to pass ordinance 1720.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Second public hearing will be on ordinance 1722 to assign initial zoning classification of HID to the Albemarle Corporate Center property. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move, motion to move, to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to pass ordinance 1722.
Sub moved.
Motion. Yes, ma'am.
With the consistency statement, don't we, do we not need to add that? We haven't.
You should adopt the consistency statement.
Yes.
You entertain your motion to include the consistency statement, correct?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ordinance 1723, consider the rezoning of 1718 Blanch Street to HID. I entertain, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Staff, would you introduce this to for us?
Sure. Jerry Thompson, Jr. was the applicant, privately sponsored map amendment for the following tax records, 24201, 24166, and 5597. His property is currently zoned, single-family residential, but he, and neighborhood business district, but he's requesting it to be rezoned heavy industrial district. It's about 3.15 acres total. It's a current, if you guys are familiar with the property, it's a meat processing facility off of Blanch. That's the current use. Adjoning properties are all zoned, single-family residential. What Mr. Thompson is doing is really, he's trying to just rezone it so that the use can lose its nonconforming status. That's really what's coming down right now. It is provided by city utilities, whatnot. Environment's concern is that the property actually is in the floodway, 100-year flood zone, and then 500-year flood zone. Here's a map of the parcel. As you can see, the green is the 500, the blue is the 100, and of course, the pink is the, is in the floodway. That property, the building is currently existing. The use is still ongoing right now as a meat processing facility, but it is zoned, as you can see, R10 here, so it's a nonconforming use. It doesn't necessarily allow him to expand, or if there's any damage over 60%, et cetera, that use has to discontinue. So I think Mr. Thompson's intent here is trying to get it rezoned so it becomes a byright use, so that if anybody wants to expand it in the future, or if it does receive repair or damage in excess of 60%, he does not have to stop that use. Actually, this is the future land use map. The parcel is actually closer to right here, if you can see. It's kind of hard to see it. It's right around here, and this is Blanch. As you can see, it's actually zoned for general residential in the future land use map, which is really low density, cul-de-sacs, whatnot, single-family residential. Switching it to HID is not necessarily in alignment with the specified land use plan. It's important to note that if it gets rezoned, HID, it allows for various uses, including processed meat facilities as a byright use and other heavy industrial uses, not limited to that. So it's, it's a pretty noticeable spike from going, from being single-family residential to being HID is the request. It did go to planning board. Planning board made a decision on 7/0 to actually not recommend this to be approved. However, they did mention that, as I spoke with Mr. Thompson a while back ago, his other option is to pursue the, expanding the property with a conditional use permit through ordinance 92022 extension of nonconforming. That's probably, that's one option available in addition to this rezoning. If he does rezone it, the whole parcel can, you know, be outfitted. If you do it as a conditional use, it will actually have to come back in front of you guys, and it would be site-specific. So, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is there any information that you're here to provide us that was not available to the planning board?
No.
Two questions before anyone else speaks, just so I'm of right mind. Go back to the picture of the, if you will, go back, go back.
One more.
One more. So the parcels in question.
The parcels in question, correct.
Are just above and below, correct?
Right, right. So that's just, that's 1718, and then he also owns the portions adjoining on the northern and southern portions, all three. So as you can see, they're all zoned. Two of them is zoned, R10, and one of them is zoned neighborhood business district.
One other question, just as, actually, two questions before anybody else speaks, just so again, so I've got it clear. I can't remember, is there an exit on the other end, or is it just one way in and out on that street?
I think it's, it's in.
Is it both ways? Where does it end, on the south side?
On the south side, it runs into Gray. Gray runs into 52.
Okay, okay. That's the second question. Third question, just to put things in perspective. And I hate to throw you under the bus, but here goes. Upon your own knowledge, okay, how long has that particular entity, business entity, been in that spot, number one, compared to when we might have started zoning, number two? And again, I might be throwing you under the bus.
I'm not sure about the specific date. I'll ask Mr. Thompson. 63 years.
Okay.
So zoning actually went into effect statewide in 19, I mean, not statewide, here. We adopted it in the, in the early 1950s, as opposed to when development was there. I don't know when you started seeing residential, if it was, if the residential houses were there when we adopted, or if it just naturally grew.
Very good.
So, but it is currently in a residential area in the back of a neighborhood. So that's, it's kind of a nonconforming, it's a nonconforming, so.
Thank you.
One question. So if the applicant is in agreement to do a conditional use, will this have to go back to the planning board?
No. A conditional use will go straight to you guys. This is just a map amendment, so it has to go in planning board. It's advisory council, and it goes to you guys.
Okay.
And she just, it can just jump. Let me check 9222 again, but I'm pretty sure it goes straight to city council like all the other conditional use permits.
It does. Mr. Thompson, come up, please. Is there some reason why you did not choose to go to conditional use after the planning board told you what their thoughts were?
No, that's, that's what I did.
So you do want it to go conditional?
Because I knew I didn't have a chance at HID.
Okay. Well, I think the confusion here is, there's no paperwork been filed asking it to change to conditional use. So if you want to go conditional use, you need to come in to the planning department and file that paperwork, and also bring them a sketch of what you want to do there, like a footprint of the building. I'm, I'm not speaking for council here. They'll have to vote in a minute, but I would think that they would be a lot more receptive to a conditional use because it's exactly the business that you've got now. You're just wanting to expand, where HID opens it up to everything in the world.
I knew I didn't have a chance.
Okay.
So what we have before us, Your Honor, is not even actually what he's requesting, is that right?
Well, it is now, because that's the only formal paperwork we've got. We'll have to vote on what we have before us tonight, but he can come back in and file the paperwork to bring it back to council as a conditional use permit.
So just for clarification, when you originally submitted the paperwork, were you going in for heavy, heavy industrial, or did some, did your thought, concept change along the way?
Well, common sense told me that conditional use was going to happen, because I have a much better chance of, you know, reaching that goal, obtaining that. But I knew heavy industry in that neighborhood, which I do own the houses, six of them in front of our plant, there are mine too. But I know it don't change anything, it's still a neighborhood. But I knew I didn't have much of a chance with heavy industry, because like Ronnie said, it opens up a broad, a broad door, locking that.
Mayor, could he not just withdraw this?
No, sir. I'm going to refer to staff or the attorney one on that, if he.
I'd try to withdraw.
If you want to withdraw it and let's not vote on it, you need to say that, if you want, if that's what you want.
I don't know if it's the best bet or not, I don't know.
Totally up to you. Right now, we have something we need to vote on. If you want to withdraw it, you need to tell us you want to withdraw.
Yeah, I think we will, and.
So you want to withdraw this?
Yeah, and.
And come back and you'll do the paperwork for the conditional use.
Okay.
We'll have to wait till the next meeting to vote on that, right? Well, he has to turn in the paperwork, then we have to set the public hearing. So we'll set the public hearing in September, and it would be, the earliest we can hear it would be October.
It's kind of important to know that conditional processing would require some site plan approval in the fall beforehand, so.
Kevin.
It might, you know, it might not necessarily be September, depending on.
Depending on how quick he gets his plans.
Right.
So what, what I would recommend would be to allow staff to write up a letter. I believe your intention is to sell the property right now, correct?
For potential buyer, right.
Right. And we don't have any guarantees on a conditional use permit at this time, but I believe it might be helpful if staff were to draft a letter to the effect that it's been recommended that a conditional use permit be submitted. That could go along with your sale of the property, allow them the flexibility to determine what they want to see on-site there, rather than you guessing at it right now.
Is that good?
That's good.
Well, you know, my thinking, Your Honor, may I continue?
Sure.
My, my thinking was, and that's the reason I asked that question, the building and the business have been there forever, and it was a family business. And I, I didn't personally want to go in and say, you know, we needed to be changing things, because, I mean, we, we worked, we, the city, worked around that particular establishment 60 years ago, so thank you, this is good. Thank you.
I need to entertain a motion that we close the public hearing first.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich. Second by Councilmember Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I would also like to entertain a motion that we honor the request of the owner to withdraw his application. Sub moved. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitely. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So you'll get with staff and work that up and bring it back to them. Number six is ordinance 1724 to amend the zoning ordinance to allow adult daycare centers in R10, single-family residential district. Again, this is a public hearing. Staff, would you first introduce it, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll open the ordinance for you here. What you see here, in effect, is, is the same language that we had in the R10 district, except for when you go down to the section on conditional use. I don't have it highlighted here, so give me just a second to find it.
Six.
Okay, yeah, number six. Conditional use, number six, thank you. We've added an adult daycare center at the very end down there, and this language is the exact same as what you see in the R8 district. So basically, we said they're allowed in R8 and R10 as conditional use permit, so you guys would review those when they come in.
Counsel, will I have any questions?
Now we allow big kids.
Counsel, will I have any questions? Staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to pass ordinance 1724.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number seven, ordinance 1725 to amend the definition of adult gaming establishments. This also is a public hearing. Staff, would you introduce?
Thank you. If everyone will remember, staff brought this current ordinance to y'all back in May to change the definition of adult gaming establishment, and then also which districts they are allowed in. At the time, it was recommended there be allowed up to two units before it would really meet the definition of an adult gaming establishment. They also take that out, put it at one or more, basically, any, any of them would make an adult gaming establishment. So what staff's done here, essentially gone back to what we had with the original ordinance, there's really just a change of the numbering on here. It says, "Any establishment deemed legal by state law featuring three or more standalone electronic or conventional gaming units, skill-based or otherwise, that serve three or more patrons in such capacity at any one time."
Counsel, will I have any questions? Staff?
The only thing I have is, didn't, didn't somewhere along the line, this game has to be games of skill?
What we've done with the new ordinance is try to get out of determining whether something is a game of skill, or a game of chance, or anything, and leave that to the state. We're focused solely on that it be what the payout on the games is, you know, what the age range is, that you have to play in, that kind of stuff. That's how we make the determination. Basically, all that either, either/or that you're describing right now, the old sweep-stake stuff, or the skills-based game, would both fall under this definition here. And that's currently what we've, what we've got, so.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move, close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I entertain a motion to pass ordinance 1725.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Agenda adjustments? We do have an agenda adjustment. We have two add-ons to, we will add after number 29. One will be, we need to vote on the voting member for the North Carolina League meeting, and we also need to vote on the DOT contract that came in late Friday in regards to the Leonard Avenue project. I need a motion to amend the agenda. Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Amount delegation. Number eight, Keandra Ellis to request a special event permit and road closure for a back-to-school event. You'll come forward, please, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everyone?
All right. Would you also state your address, please, for the record?
Yes. My address is 534 Smokehouse Lane.
Thank you.
Here in Albemarle.
Go ahead and tell us what you want.
Okay. I'm sorry. Well, basically, on August the 12th, we had made a proposal to see if we could get the short part of Lincoln Street, being the corner of Elizabeth and Lincoln, and Martin Luther King and Lincoln, close off to have the kids back to school. It's our annual event. Typically, we have it at the EYL Center, but this year, we decided that we wanted to branch off and have it in the community, to make it more community inclusion. We're doing bookbag giveaways, school supply giveaways. The kids are modeling off their uniform and showcasing some talent that they've been practicing for over the past, probably, two and a half months. So we wanted to do it the correct and proper way by bringing forth to city council to see if we could get that short portion of the street close off for two and a half hours, maybe, at most.
Counsel, will I have any questions?
And this is Saturday.
Yes, ma'am. Saturday, August the 12th.
They're doing, already doing something on Friday, somebody is, out at, the bus driver folks are doing something in, in front of Walmart, or somewhere. I think I heard that on the radio, so maybe, maybe kids will get to both of them.
Yeah, hopefully, they'll get to all of them. I know it's quite a few of them, but our motto is, hopefully, this year, no kid left behind. You know, we're, we're both helping the kids, and we're helping the school system, because we've raised quite a significant number of bookbags. We're looking at about 70 bookbag giveaways. We're gonna feed them. It's, it's supposedly, it's set up to have it to be a good day, hopefully, if the rain holds off. My fingers have been crossed, and I've been watching the weather, so we can't do anything about Mother Nature, but if the rain holds off, that's, that's what we're hoping for.
Counsel, will I have any questions?
Motion to approve the specifics in the request, including the waiver of the $50 fee.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitely. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Number nine, Mr. Jeff Edwards, District Manager for Waste Management, to discuss issues involving our recycling services.
Good evening. I'm ready for, I'm ready for questions, but I just wanted, wanted to update you a little bit. We obviously had some issues this first month. A lot of, some personnel issues, and I want to apologize first. It's not what we, we prefer to be. We, we believe we're better than that, and we will turn it up, of course, but update as far as this week. We are on a recycle week this week, and we have a good schedule, a better schedule than we had two weeks ago, where we ran into a lot of problems. So I'll take questions, any, any concerns you might have, and try to address them.
Jeff, I noticed at 5:00 this afternoon, I saw the garbage had been picked up in most areas, but the recycling had not even started. What have you done to address the issues, and how do you feel that we are going to go forward?
Well, part of the problem is the recycle, the places that we have to dump at are very far away. We, we had an alternative plan, but that failed, and so we're back to taking it all the way up to Salisbury when the truck fills up. So we are looking at rescheduling a few routes, so we get, we're gonna have to double-team the truck, I mean, put two trucks on the recycle route. Until we're able to do that, which would be probably next time through, we're gonna have a situation like we have, we had two weeks ago, and we'll have this week. The problem two weeks ago is, we're, we're much better prepared this week for the issues that we have. We have more drivers, but we need one more, and we'll have that next time around.
So you're running two garbage trucks, one refuge truck, one limb truck, and one recycling truck right now?
That's right.
Jeff, you can raise that, so you like to bend down, just raise it up. There you go. Hurts my back.
Look, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'll put you on the spot a little bit. Do you honestly think, considering you run, run two garbage trucks, that one recycling truck is going to be able to handle the city?
Well, when I say two garbage trucks, one of them is a bulk truck, where it picks up all the stuff that's not in the carts. So it is really one truck for the carts, one truck for the bulk outside of the carts, one recycle truck. And the difference is, or should be, should be, that the recycle truck gets more, because most, some people don't put recycle bins out.
So you're saying that, I know, that you were running two side dump trucks for garbage, so you're now only running one of those for garbage and one for recycling?
No, we've always run one side load truck and one railroad truck for garbage. The railroad truck would get the bulk, and they would get some of the carts, maybe 100 to 200 a day.
I don't want to dispute you, but I've, I've watched two trucks, two side load trucks run for the last several years in neighborhoods. One would go one way, and the one would go the other, so they were covering both sides of the road, and they would meet on the road, because they're running through people's yards, and I got complaints on that. So I know there were two, other than the back refuge truck.
Yeah, and it's not, our, our routes are set up for one railroader and one AS, one side load truck. You could have seen that, you could see that on certain days. They all come here with two trucks, get Albemarle done, and move on to a different area. So there is some of that. I don't want to, you know, you can dispute me all, all you want, that's, that's what I'm here for, and I hope you do. Throw it, throw it out there, because I realize our service has been poor this first month, and we need to fix it.
And council has really heard a lot from the community, because they've not been getting it picked up.
Right. It's, we're running too late, and we need to get, again, we need to get a second truck out there and, and adjust for the disposal problems and things like that.
Counsel, question?
I think this week, we will get everything. We won't take it into the weekend like we did last time, so we'll get everything on the proper date, but we'll be running later at night. It'll be the, the next cycle around two weeks, where we should be able to put the second guy out there.
Talk about, and I'm, again, I'm just, just comments here. I personally couldn't even go to the grocery store, okay, without being, not just in conversation with people, but Jeff bombarded, okay, by folks at the grocery store that say, here you are making us do this, and you're not ready, and we've had blue cans out there, our whole neighborhood's got blue cans out there, they're still out there, and this is day seven. I saw over the weekend, I think actually on Facebook, where someone that sit in the eastern part of the town, I'm looking at Dexter, said, wait a minute, ours is still out there. So we can't go anywhere, and I don't mind having egg on my face, because I've had egg on my face before. But my big problem was this not, was not something we just decided to do in June, or May, or April, or March, or February. And mine has been chewed, because we've allowed it to continue, even though we're the first two weeks and it didn't work. I'm not carrying it all, and I've had to. I mean, I can't go anywhere without it coming off, okay, without people just, and then they say, but you're charging us, you're charging us, you're charging us, and, and I tried to not defend, but offset that with the benefits of it. And it's not like we just changed our mind. It's not like you all weren't planning for Plan A, and then Plan C came. And then the top of, the top it off, what I'm hearing is, is that people, they've got the number memorized, 704-982-1224. And they get a person on the other end that says, I don't know how to handle this, because we're getting calls all the time. Or it goes to voicemail, and it gives you that 800 number, and they call. So I'm hearing a lot of it, and it's just, I mean, I am not speaking for the rest of my compadres up here, but I'm not gonna go move for, I can't. I, I have been a public servant for almost 30 years, and I can't do that. I just don't want to carry it anymore. So that's, and I mean, I've been very, very understanding of times in the past, and I know that our city manager and our assistant manager are tired of seeing emails from me for the past two weeks, because I hear it, and I don't care what time of day and night it is, I go email them, because I'm, I'm not carrying it. And I think Bill Aldrich has got something.
Ms. Trump?[1769.32]
Ms. Trump?
Well, first of all, uh, Jeff, when you, when you look at the, when you look at the big picture, you know, we, we, we had options, we decided to go with waste management, number one, because you all had experience in curbside pickup. So, you know, when the recycling bins were delivered, you know, I probably, like everybody else, got home from work, went running out there, and that's pretty cool, started looking at it. And then I look on the top at the calendar and on one side it says Town of Albemarle and on the other side it says City of Alburmarle, misspelled. And then right underneath that, it has www.alburmarle dot whatever, NCUS. So, I mean, it basically, to me, I'm like, well, did somebody not proof this? I mean, did somebody not read through this? I mean, we're paying you people a ton of money and you don't even spell her name right. And then, second of all, people oftentimes resist change, well, it doesn't matter what it is. And to get people on a certain routine and certain schedule takes a lot, especially when you have a, a, the city our size. So, you know, I just was texting with my wife, apologize, but, uh, at 6:30, our recycling still has not been picked up yet. This is totally unacceptable and I don't know if we have any recourse as far as, um, in our contract, but we're paying you people for services we're not getting and that's unacceptable. And I'm like Councilmember Hall, I've been getting blown up, texts, phone calls, emails, and, you know, you never get but one chance to make a first impression. And unfortunately, waste management needs to fix this yesterday. That's all I got.
Mr. Towns?
Well, it's obvious that we didn't get off to a good start. First of all, I'm gonna go back to even whenever you, with the delivery of the carts, like Mr. Aldrich said, in the contract or the proposal, I think you said that you'd made the deliveries within three days. I think we got off on the wrong start there because it took probably seven or eight days to even make the deliveries, you know? I want to know exactly, as a result of this recycling project that you all took on, approximately, how many additional personnel have you brought on board to handle this?
Well, we should, we should have brought two on, but that's, that's the inherent, or that's the issue we're all, we're talking about here, that's.
You brought one, you said you should have brought two.
We should have brought two, right.
And that's people.
That's going back to, yeah, yeah. That's going back to what you, you said earlier about, we, we didn't do this yesterday, we didn't do this a couple of weeks ago, we did this back in February, January, whatever, when it was approved. The, I, I don't have a good answer for that. We had a plan, we should, we've never had an issue with hiring enough people and keeping enough people on board and getting them ready for this. We had plenty of time, I'm not, I, I wouldn't dispute that and we've got to be better and that's, that's it, it in a nutshell, and we ran into problem after problem after problem. So, going back to 6:30, that's exactly where we're at and, and again, we, we'll get it this week, we are in better shape than we were two weeks ago, but we're gonna be running too late at night and we don't want to do that. And I agree with you, I don't want to be out, I don't want my drivers out there that late. So we've got some problems to work through, it will gradually improve, two weeks from now will be better than this week and so on, but we, I would venture to say that we won't have anything carrying over to the weekend this year, this week, like we did two weeks ago and we should be able to start turning this around.
I hate you gotta share the burden alone, I wish Mr. Joseph was here so that he could share this with you. But, um, another thing, and I don't know if this is on the city part or waste management, uh, there's a lot of confusion when we say recycling every other week. I think there, I don't know what we can do to improve the communication process as to what zones is on which week because people are just rolling their carts out there every week, basically, um, trying to get on schedule, you know, so.
Jeff, one of the things I've noticed, and only a few of the neighborhoods got the, even the paper on top, like Mr. Aldrich was talking about, I've seen so many cans with nothing on top of them. And are you, do you have any plans to try to update that and get that resolved? And how are you handling the residents that still do not have carts because you ran out?
We have, uh, as far as the calendar thing, that, the label on top, there was the misprint and obviously that shouldn't have happened and I'll take the blame and back to Stan Joseph, he's not the operations guy, I'm the operations guy, so I, I should be taking the.
He, he communicates with government though, right? I think that's, that's his.
He's a, he's a public sector manager and he, he does do that, but, um, back to the calendars, we have reprinted them, just got them, uh, to Albemarle, they're in our office here in Albemarle and we can, we have to figure out a way to, to, uh, get those to all of the residents, they have the proper name and then of course the schedule so everybody will know when their recycling weekend is.
And when you run out of containers, how are you addressing that?
The, uh, container situation is, uh, we're, we're, I've been in contact with the manufacturer to get more, uh, we did order what, the number, the number that was in the, um, the RFP, but there have been some additions that we.
There's a lot of people that have got two, are you going back and picking those up and taking them to the right locations?
Yes, Michael and Christina, I talked about that last week and, uh, we have already gone with our drivers and they're going to let us know when they are, that by the end of this week, we should have, the, the folks that do not have a container will have them by the end of this week and then the extras that we see that we can certainly pick up, we will pick up also.
Okay, Mr. Trump?
Um, yes, I think you and I have spoken quite a bit one-on-one and that's the reason you're here tonight, we wanted you here. The people don't need to hear us talk about the problems, what they need to hear are the solutions that you have.
Right.
I mean, obviously we have the problems, any obviously that came into this thing thinking that we would not have a problem or problems would be fooling themselves. Uh, however, the, again, the solutions are what's important here, uh, looking at what you need to do and I appreciate you sharing your solutions and hopefully those will carry us forward and this blot can be put away. Uh, I did have one of my neighbors bring to my house an extra can, uh, that they got, in fact, there were four delivered in our neighborhood that, uh, uh, some people had two. And I don't know what's happened to those, but I did have one call and say, can I bring it to your house? I said, certainly. So, um, that was certainly a miscue and, uh, hopefully the citizens will. If you have to surrender one of them and let somebody else have it so that, uh, one, we don't have to spend any more money in bringing excessive cans back into town that we don't need. If we ordered that number, we should have that number there and I don't know that anybody's gonna fill up two of them, uh, uh, unless they have a big party. Uh, but, yeah, well, I appreciate what you're doing, uh, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes, but I do appreciate you coming in here and talking about your solutions and let's focus entirely on that, the problems are non-existent now.
Mr. Whitley?
I mean, I'm not gonna pile on anymore, I think the point's been made. Um, did, did I miss, did you say that they are gonna label those cans as recycling? There are decals or?
Yeah, because the, uh, the misprint was found so late, we couldn't get the reprinted contain, our stickers fast enough. We had to keep delivering the carts and now we've got the stickers in our office here in Albemarle and have figured out a way to get those to citizens.
Because I've seen, seen some cans sitting around that I suspect don't have recycling in them. Um, have y'all, other than these problems, are there any other public education type problems you've run into, like?
No, as far as, uh, contamination or anything like that, not, not really, we haven't had any issues getting, you know, disposing of it and all that, so it's, uh, it's been on us just running too late. Unfortunately, staffing runs into a lot of other issues, it's not just running late or running into Saturday, it's running, maybe missing a street or the people not getting what they should, getting a container when they should. And I could go on and on about all the problems with staffing if.
Well, I think getting the cans labeled will go a long way because some people might think they just have a new blue trash can, uh, so, you know.
Jeff, I would encourage you to get a public relations person to contact the schools. The schools were one of our biggest supporters when we were talking about doing this, the teachers were telling their kids and if we can get something out to the kids when the schools come back, I think they could take it home, maybe that would help some too.
Sure.
Anything we can do to, to let people more know what we're doing. Ms. Hughes?
Um, Mr. Edwards, this doesn't, it's part of this, but, um, so Green Pieces was the company that we had prior to and, um, I have a cart, I know a lot of people still have carts from Green Pieces and I understand, you know, we can't use that cart now, we have the blue carts. Is there, is there options or something that, you know, we could, as a citizen, do with those old carts or, or, I mean, I hate, I mean, I don't need a trash cart, a blue cart, and then I've got this other extra cart.
Do you have the pink ones?
No, I don't, I didn't get pink, I just have a good old green cart. I know the pink ones, I had heard, because I had some friends that were told that the pink ones, they would be able to use those in lieu of the blue, I think, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, we were trying, that request came from Christina and the, the purpose of doing that is, well, then we save on a few carts and we have some extras for people that are struggling to get them. But then it came, it got to, well, there were, some people had orange carts, some people had green carts and I, and the problem we run into is the drivers, we've got to be really careful with recycling not to mix it with trash.
Right.
That's sin number one, we can't do.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I kind of drew the line at the pink, I thought that would cover most of them and.
Right.
I think, I, I don't know, maybe if we put the labels on the green one, they'll real, the driver would realize that.
I mean, I, I guess to like Benton's point, I mean, I would love to quote, turn my blue one in if I could use the green one that I have, if there was some way to mark it, but again, uh, your drivers are moving, they're trying to get the trash picked up, I don't want them to stop and go, okay, which, which one am I supposed to get? But I, you know, what do you do with a used recycle bin? I mean, I don't know.
I've got campaign signs in mine, Martha.
I, I don't know.
If you want to get rid of it, we can take it at our yard here and we can get rid of it, that's not an issue.
So how would, how would I, I mean, how would I put that out there so you would know to dispose of it?
Uh, just, I would just need maybe calling your address and we can, you know, to Christina or somewhere.
I'm thinking there's probably others, I, I don't know, but I've had some other friends that go, well, now I've got, what, you know, what do I do with this? I mean, you can put rakes in it or something, but, and I know that's not, that was not anything part of the contract or the deal or discussion or anything, this is just a, well, what can we do with an old recycle bin, so?
Some of it's just growing, it's growing pains and changing the type of operation, so, but we can certainly take it off your hands and that's, that's.
I mean, I just assumed if someone else could use it, but I, I do, I think we've all, we've, we've all been pretty verbal about it. The abuse, I think we've all heard and, and the contact we've gotten and as to Benton's point, I think, you know, I appreciate you being here, we're trying to be transparent and I think you're very sincere in what you're trying to do and go forward and, and I, I think we all do appreciate that. It, it was a rocky start, but hopefully we can get on a little more firmer ground.
Well, I'm, I'm optimistic that this week will be much better and, yeah, it's a rocky start and, um, I don't like it any more than any of you do. I, I know you get the phone calls and trust me, I know how many emails and phone calls I've gotten over the last few weeks, so we, we've got to get it fixed quickly.
Education piece. Jeff doesn't know about this, but before Stan, Stan's on a leave right now, before he left, we've actually worked with him on getting some educational flyers out to the schools and they're already set, we actually have them, Lindsay Carter's been working on it, we have them in her office. So that's already in place, we're gonna get those out when school starts back.
Ms. Hall, you got a question?
Just a follow-up, um, do we have at all of our city buildings, and this might, I might need to be looking at Christina at the same time, at all of our city buildings are we now utilizing, um, carts, recycle and trash carts? And at our parks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
We are at our fire stations and, um, public housing, we have ran out of carts, so we've been trying to work on getting those for downtown recycling and, uh, the other city facilities.
And the parks, et cetera, and market station and those kinds of things where there are outside events.
Because of the cart shortage, we've made it clear, Waste Management, we want all the residents to have carts before we have.
Understand that. My last comment is for staff and for Jeff, okay? We need to look at, have the contract on that we signed whenever it was, six or eight months ago, that, see, this is how much we're gonna pay and da, 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 da. We really need to look at that because I'm hearing from some people, change is hard, Bill Aldrich, change is very hard. And I've had some people say, you're making us do this, you're charging me to do this and then you're not following through with it. So I have said, you know, we have to eat that because this is a new mindset. There are several of us who have always recycled, but we've got to change that mindset. So that's something that does not need to be discussed here, but I challenge you all to look at that in retrospect for the first ninety, first period of time. And I'm saying that publicly because I think our, the citizens of Albemarle, hold us accountable to that.
I think, I think Michael and Christina would tell you that we had that discussion and I have taken it to, uh, my boss and, uh, we are working on that solution, it doesn't happen overnight, but we, we met last Tuesday, I should have some results from that in a few days.
Thank you.
Mr. Aldrich?
Jeff, how many residents in Albemarle currently do not have recycling carts?
It's, the list that we have is about 25.
Okay. And in the evening, on, on recycling days, what time do y'all pick up until? What time does it stop?
So, I think in the contract it's seven o'clock, right?
I think that's correct.
It's seven, it's seven o'clock. If, if your wife called and it was about 6:30, hadn't been picked up yet, I would say it should be very soon, uh, unless, unless we, our guy ran into a problem that I don't know about and I was checking my phone before I stepped up here to make sure we're on schedule. And it's, this week's gonna be rough, I, I'll be honest with you, but it will not be anywhere near what it was two weeks ago and, and like I said earlier, two weeks from now, we should be fairly decent.
Well, and, and please don't take the comments I made at you personally a moment ago, but again, it's, it, for me, it's just like this thing has just been thrown together, there's been no real pre-planning and it's just, if it would have been one hiccup or one little slight situation, it'd be one thing, but you spelled her name wrong and it just, it's just scattered from there, so, um, I hope, I don't know if it's, I don't know, uh, Mr. Ferris, if it's in our contract with them, I don't know if there's any kind of monetary penalties they, we can assess them, but.
That's what I was talking about.
And that's what we had a discussion about and we're trying to, I've proposed a few things to Jeff and he's trying to, uh, see what, um, you know, we can hopefully mutually agree on before, uh, other actions are taken, if that makes sense.
Ms. Hughes?
Um, Jeff, you had said earlier, I think, that you were initially taking recycling to where?
We'll dispose of it in Salisbury at a Sunoco facility.
That's the closest, I mean, that's your only option, I guess?
The other option is the Uwari landfill.
Okay.
But they charge per ton, uh, significant amount, way more than is normal for recycle.
So when you, but does that mean someone takes the, at Uwari, they take it and it goes somewhere else or?
I'm not as familiar with Uwari as I am with Sunoco, but that's typical of Sunoco, they will take it there and then they ship it out to a, a handling facility.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
My last comment, and I'm not trying to tell you, that's okay, listen, I'm telling you, I guess everywhere I've gone for the past two and a half weeks, I've heard it. My last comment would be, if 1224 is gonna be answered, and I'm sure she or they have had all kinds of phone calls, but for me to get it, that, that they've called that number and your customer service person over on Cobal Avenue, that's the response that they get from her, that customer service ain't cutting it. So again, I'm not dissing anybody, but I'm saying that we've got to have better customer service than that. If I'm telling people to call 1224, okay?
I would just say this on the customer service part of it, I've never heard that before, um, Melissa.
I know.
Has been solid during, it's been very trying for her, she's taken every single call, hundreds and hundreds of calls and, um, she's getting beat up and.
I know.
She doesn't always have the right answer, she may have said that improperly that time, uh, to a few people, I don't know, but I, I, I will stand by her, she's pretty solid.
She was between a rock and a hard place.
I know she was and, and I'm, yeah.
You know, we just, we just gotta be patient now.
She would probably kill me and, and get it over with, but.
How?
And I'm sure you would too.
Jeff, thank you, uh, we're just looking for you to handle it and make it right, so I'm sure you're working on it and we, and it'll be done quickly.
Again, I apologize and, uh, we'll get it straightened out.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Jeff.
Number 10, Adam Conker, LKC Engineering, to provide project updates on the 52 treatment plant, inflow and infiltration and electrical upgrades.
Mayor, members of the council. No, I'm not gonna ask for money, I wasn't there after that.
He said he has a change order tonight and was happy.
I'm gonna completely redo my presentation after that, no, it is a, a, a. I'm going to completely redo my presentation after that. It is a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. I understand you have a very long agenda tonight, so I'm going to move through some things quickly. If I move too fast, please feel free to raise your hand up and we'll go back. I don't have any action items tonight except, on this presentation, except we would ask for some direction or even a motion from council on the elevated tank when we get to that discussion. Everything else is an update on this agenda item, and then we do have a contract on the agenda down the, I think, the next item up. So, just a quick update on the 52 project. Again, I don't have any change orders in front of you. I'm going to show you some of the same, some of the same budget numbers that we've seen before. We're still processing and getting some final numbers on a couple of these items, which is why I don't have anything in front of you. Just to see where we are financially, we're about, over 90% done. In fact, the contractor's last schedule they presented to us showed them demobilizing at the end of this month. So, we're closing out some odds and ends, down to the last items of small details. I have several, or a few pictures here. I must admit that at this point in the project, there's not a whole lot that you have not seen already that's real interesting and exciting, but I'm going to try and show you some of the changes to the building exterior. This is from November of last year. Just some things to note. You'll see the old tanks are still in the back. You'll see this framework is still up front. You'll notice, excuse me, the old precast concrete trim on the front. So, if we fast forward to just a few weeks ago, again, my picture-taking skills are not great, but the old tanks are gone. You'll see the metal framework up front is also gone, the letters on the front, the paintwork, and you can see the trim. I have another picture, but the architectural panels on the front, I think, and I think the staff thinks look really sharp. You also notice the framework is up on the tank in preparation for painting.
It looks like a crane.
It's a crane, yeah. I don't know, I'll let you know. So, this is a close shot of the front of the building. I think the screen shows it better than I see it, but you can see the architectural panels on the front and the stainless steel letters. They also, just, I guess, two weeks ago, poured the concrete steps out here. Some other items that have happened, the structural steelwork on the inside of the building is completed. This is a shot over the old pump room. You can see the I-beams to secure the outer walls. I don't, I didn't have any of the good pictures, but there's new steel in place throughout most of the upstairs. And then your break room cabinets and most of the plumbing is complete now. This picture's about two weeks old. All the appliances are in. I don't think they're all working quite yet, but they're all in place. So, change order discussion items, the last time I was in front of you, we talked about, as we get to the end of the job, we are prioritizing items based on the three numbers you see below. The methodology of the priorities are the same. You'll see as I shuffle through these, there are a couple of items that have changed. For example, we, item number five is new. I don't believe you've seen that. Item number four is a sum of, lumped into one item, about four, or three different items we saw the last time. The number is about the same, but they're all smudged together. And then number six, I didn't get it in time for the agenda, but that $25,000, the last, we just got a number in last week, and Mike and I are reviewing it, and it's $18,000. So, there's just some moving pieces as we, as we get towards the end here. That's priority one, and I do believe in the near future, you'll see, maybe even at your next meeting, an actual change order request that'll look something similar to this for consideration. Priority two, these are the same two items that were on there the last time. I think we're going to talk about number two here in a few minutes. And then priority three, you actually, one of these items got shifted out from the last time you saw this. So, if you kind of sum all those up, this, we showed this to you last time, just the contingency funds that are available now, and then what would be available if we implemented all of one, all of two, or all of three. Before I move on to the elevated tank discussion, any questions or comments on that? Okay. So, we did speak, and I believe it was earlier this winter, the tank, and what we're seeking direction from you on is, is what version or what do we want the logo to look like on the tank? We have decided with staff that the background of the tank will be what we call tank white. Most of your tanks in town are that color. Has a little bit of a gray, bluish color, but for the most part, it looks white. Some things to consider when you look at, when you think about this, where do you normally see it from? I would, I would ask you to consider that you really don't see the tank when you're sitting at the stoplight with the plant, because it's kind of up out of the window. You really see it approaching from the north and from the south. The tank does sit far off the road, and the ladder and the float gauge, I'll show you in a second, make it a little difficult. This is an aerial shot, an up-high shot of the tank. The angle is kind of from the stoplight, and you'll see the bowl ladder here and your sight gauge there really prevent you from putting a banner logo on the front side. Yes, ma'am?
And clarification, from the stoplight, are you headed north? Are you headed south? Are you headed straight into it from Bethany Road?
Right here, you would be, this image, of course, I'm up high, taking this picture, but you would, it's kind of in line with if you were on Bethany Road looking at the tank.
And I say that just for everybody's point of reference. Thank you.
Right. Okay. And if you look, you can see on the far left of the tank, you can see the water droplet. So, when they painted this last time, they faced the logos at about, about due south, about 6:00, and about 11:30 or so on the north side of the tank. So, what we have discussed, and of course, we welcome any feedback from you, really kind of one of two options. I think we've decided or have discussed that the wording on the bottom of your brand, the North Carolina and the Water, Land, Air Opportunity are just too small to get up there at this size. So, what we're really looking at are one of two options. One is something like this, and I should apologize in advance for our rendering skills or lack thereof. Our staff has tried their best to get versions of this over images, and it's just not our expertise. But this is one version, and then I have a far-away attempt. Again, Ms. Hughes, or excuse me, Ms. Hall, if you were standing kind of at the stoplight at Bethany, looking up the hill at the water plant, this would kind of be what you could see. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, this shot here, is that coming, is that coming north?
This would be taken, yeah, this is looking east, yes.
Bethany Road.
Okay.
This would be standing right near the stoplight at Bethany Road, looking at the plant. Yes, sir.
The best view you have of that tank is coming down Carter Road.
Correct.
I mean, that is, it is, it pops up like a mushroom out there. It's amazing.
And then the other version is something like this. Again, this is just to give you a feel for the concept, and it would look something like that from the same vantage point.
One on the nail, one on either side?
Yeah, yes. And I do think, of course, it's up for discussion, but I think that the consideration has been, whatever the decision is, you would put one on each side.
So, you can get one on both sides?
We can get one on both sides.
Because that one there you gave is basically going to be seen traveling north, or like Benton said, on Carter Road. Nothing coming south. So, you would be able to get one on the opposite end side, too, though.
Correct. If you were traveling from Richfield coming south, you would, there would be one on the north face of the tank that's not shown. And again, is our limited rendering expertise is not able to give you two versions of that on this tank, on these pictures. So, if, of course, I welcome questions, and we're happy to give feedback. So, this is kind of, I'll say, version A, that looks something like that, and that's kind of version B, that would look something like that.
Do you have any idea, Adam, the price difference between the two?
I don't, I would not expect there to be a significant price difference between the two. Of course, the letters alone would cost less, but I would expect it to be a couple of thousand less.
Are we decal-ing or painting it out?
Oh, it's painted on, yes.
I'm a little concerned that you would be able to tell that that, those three boxes and what they are from a distance. I don't, I don't know. I think it's, I'd rather have our name larger, yeah, than, I just think people are going, "What are those three boxes? What are those?"
Squiggles. Yeah. Sometimes less is better.
They're squiggles.
Yeah. I like just the name.
And I'm not sure you see what those squiggles are on a car either. I mean, I think you just begin to recognize that logo.
That's part of...
So, I don't know that, you know, people are going to look at it and say, "That's water, and that's land, and, you know, that's clouds." You know, you just begin to recognize that logo on everything. So...
Well, and too, you think about coming up and down 52, you know, 45 miles an hour. Are you really going to be able to have time to really stop? And I mean, I almost would rather have just the lettering and have the lettering a little bit larger than having the logos.
If I can add to the discussion, we've looked at, not only with respect to the tank at 52, but when we start to repaint the other tanks and incorporate this type of branding, what we would do. And, you know, the single lettering, I think, from our department is kind of what we would recommend as well, because that would be consistent, because we could not even really begin to think about incorporating the whole brand at the East Albemarle tank. The West Oakwood tank, there was one or two vantage points, but it gets lost in the trees. I think that our best candidate would be the Aquadel tank, Aquadel Road tank. That one is, it's right there on the road. It's kind of what I refer to as a canvas height, that, you know, would, I think, work, and maybe, and it is a gateway into the community. But the single letters would provide some consistency for us with the other tanks as well.
I want a motion unless we move this forward.
You're saying that you're going to stay consistent with the colors we have now for the tank. I know you're calling it white, and I know it used to be called gray, so I want to make sure we're staying consistent with the color.
Yes, sir, we are. This is very similar. Paint companies sometimes will change the names of the color chips, but this is a match to the colors that we have.
And what are you wanting to recommend, Mr. Dry?
That we use the single letter Albemarle as the focal point of our tanks.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Discussion, Mr. Aldrich.
Just a question, what color is the lettering going to be? Your pardon? Before Mr. Dry makes that motion, if it's brown, we might have another discussion here.
Let me ask the question again, I'm sorry. What color are the letters?
It's the lettering of our logo. It's the brown of our...
It will be the, well, of course, it's up to you, but this is the same color in your...
Pantene color.
Yeah, the assistant manager gave us the color scheme numbers, so it would be the brown or dark tan, yes.
That's right.
It could be anything you want.
Works on a water tank.
We got brown water.
Brown, okay. We don't, we don't have brown, we don't have brown water, but...
Just saying.
Turn that blue purple.
Further discussion?
It's not my choice, I won't vote for it, so we won't change the car right quick.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Continue, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on the list, the project that was funded not quite a year ago, Mike asked for us to give a quick update, and there is an action item on your agenda down, a few items down. If you remember, you received funding last fall, excuse me, you actually received it earlier this year. We applied last fall. It's a $4.8 million job. You did get half a million dollars in grant, and the loan is 0%. The last time that we discussed this was earlier this year. We were talking about the return sludge pump stations at the wastewater plant and some, your staff had some ideas and recommendations that you approved. So, I wanted to give you a quick update. This is just a rundown of what the project is. It does have your year-one electrical upgrades at the wastewater plant. If you remember, there was a six-year plan put together to improve the electrical systems. This is year one of those. The current status, the report required for the funding was approved earlier this year, and the next step is to begin the design process, and our team will, is proposing to use Southeastern Consulting Engineers for the electrical work at the wastewater plant. And the design is supposed to be completed by November the 1st of this year and submitted to the state. So, later on in your agenda, there's another item. Any questions on that?
Want to make sure, and I cornered one of your employees this week, when we go up there in front of Delco Plaza, we're going to patch what we cut out, but are we going to allow about six months to go in and grind it back and fix it right? Because it always has settled, every road we've ever had. And I don't want to stick a property owner with a settled area. We, I think we need to incorporate in there, grinding it out, fixing it right after six months or so.
I think that what you, what you said is, we will certainly take into account the, how we structure the scope of the repaving, we'll discuss with staff and maybe bring back for you, but certainly, if there's, if there's potholes or sagging or humping, we absolutely will take care of that. If it's not acceptable to the property owner, we will make it right. Does that answer the question? Okay. Last thing, I felt like, in your last budget, in your FY '17 budget, you had $100,000 budgeted to do some demolition work at the old wastewater plant. And while I was here, I thought I would real quickly show you some images of what your dollars went towards. You had $100,000 budgeted, and we took some informal bids from some local contractors, and the final budget was 63, just over $63,000. But what we did, this is an aerial shot of the old plant, and this plant was abandoned or no longer used after 1973 or '74. What's in green are the structures that are being used at this site. What's, everything else is not being used, and what's in red here is what we were demolishing. I have some real quick pictures. This is what it looked like before. There were some environmental issues, some fall hazards on the site. This is, again, an aerial shot. It was these two circles here and here. I have a deering, this was deering construction, so we tore the concrete down to, below a certain grade, and we hauled in dirt to fill it. Actually, some of the dirt came from spoil piles that the city had down on the other end of the plant. And I don't have a great shot of now except for that. This is looking a different direction, but those two circles were sitting right here. Grass is growing, still a little bit of cleanup work left to be done. We're going to wait until the weather changes for permanent seed to be established. So, wanted to give you that update. That's all I have. Any other questions for me?
Mike, the other area there, kind of to the front of the plant, that has got a lot, right in front of the four circles, in line, right there. Did we have money to budget this year to do anything with that, or what did you do?
At this time, we have no money this year to budget any demolition, any additional real estate reclamation, so...
What about the $35,000 that we didn't spend? I dare ask that, Mike.
No, that's a fair question. The $35,000 would go to some extent, but it would not cover the entire cost.
Gotcha.
Those are, you know, quite a bit deeper, and they're a little more, it's going to be a little trickier to get those, because there was a lot of piping and such, and there's a lot of mechanicals that have been pulled out.
Mayor, that was, this area was actually our first intention, and after the funds were put into the budget and staff gave us the go-ahead to start the preliminary design or drawings, and we got in, your staff drained those structures, we got in there and looked around, we realized that we didn't think that we had enough money to do that, and I felt it was important to execute this with your confidence, and so we backed up and went to those two sites, so...
Thank you. Council, have any questions of Adam?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no unannounced allegations. Your monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? The municipal calendar is in your agenda. Do you have any questions? Moving on into new business, number 13, consider engineering services agreement with LKC Engineering for Phase Two of the sanitary sewer inflow infiltration minimization and Phase One of the electrical system revaluation at the Long Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is what we were just talking about, some of it, but we have not yet entered into a contract with them. They helped us get the loan, and they're working on design, but we need to enter into a contract if we're going to proceed further.
Move that we enter into the contract?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 14 is consider amendment to engineering services agreement with Municipal Engineering Services for Phase Two of the Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Headworks. Also something we've already been discussing.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 15 is call for a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for storage at 1920 Hillco Street.
Move approval for September 5.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, set a public hearing for September the 5.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 16 is an ordinance, 1726, to allow the sale of alcoholic beverage before noon on Sunday. This is known as the brunch bill. Last meeting, we discussed that, and if you'll remember, the state legislature passed a bill allowing us to change that so it could go into effect at 10:00 a.m. for restaurants to be able to sell alcohol, and it left it up to every jurisdiction to pass their own ordinance if we so choose.
Move to approve ordinance 1726.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, approve ordinance 1726. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 17 is a presentation of the fiscal year 1718 Streetscape Implementation Activities. Our Assistant City Manager will handle this. handle this.
She's setting that up. I keep reading that a number of cities have already implemented that brunch bill. How did they do that so fast?
They had more, they had a meeting before, I mean.
We were only meeting once a month. They probably were meeting twice a month.
I just noticed. It's been a lot of publicity on that.
Yes.
Good afternoon. So, wanted to take a few minutes to go over the implementation plan for our Streetscape for this year, and before I did that, I wanted to kind of highlight some of the accomplishments that we had in the previous fiscal year for the audience and for those at home watching. So, the Streetscape Plan was adopted in March of last year, and it implements the, or discusses the plan for the next seven years. It's accessible on our website, and since the adoption, we've actually gone above and beyond where we're currently at. We're in years three, right, three and beyond right now, for the most part. So, last year, we implemented a Wi-Fi hotspot at Courthouse Square. We also put in some speakers so that folks can sit out there and listen to music. We've got new signage out there, and we've did some vegetation edits as well. So, these are a few pictures of the movable seating, and then we also refreshed the painting at the Colonnade. Liberty Gardens, we did the same thing. This is the pictures after we did vegetation edits. We also have a lot of double hanging baskets at some of our main intersections, and that's thanks to ADDC and a lot of their contributions there. We also have purchased some water bladders for those hanging baskets, so we can reduce some of the staff time that it takes to go around and water them. As everyone's seen recently, we've got bench replacements all around downtown, so those look really good. They're a nice addition to our downtown, as well as trash and receptacle, recycling receptacles, so the far left is what we used to have, and the far right is what we have now. We also have an array of different pedestrian crosswalks that we've stamped and painted, and then in the background, you'll see the planners that we've done vegetation edits in that as well. This is the Courthouse Square, the Courthouse bulbout. This is a project that our Public Works Department did. It was, it cost about $12,000 for this project to get off the ground, and this is a prime example of kind of how we're doing things in-house. It's going to save us money and implement any more projects in the long run. This is a good aerial of the stamping and the painting that we have at this square, and the crosswalks there as well, and the pole banners that we have across town. We did order two different sets of pole banners this year, one for the spring, summer, and then one for the fall, so we do plan on ordering some more for this year.
What's our plan in the tannish area there where people continue to spin tires through there?
So, if you recall, we had some, we had some array of, we had an array of different icons and the logo and different nautical signs or compasses that we talked about, and the decision at that point in time was to just paint it, and then we can come back to it later. If I recall the amount correctly, I think it was about $17,000 for us to put some kind of decal there. We can always come back to the drawing board on that and talk about it some more and see if we have some money available for this year that we want to discuss, but we don't have any plans for this year at current.
Mr. Dry, I think with the problems we're having there, if we put something like that in there, we're going to lose it because of the very, the very problem we're talking about. I think we're better off to stay with painting, and as we look, and we may decide we want to go a little darker gray or something. It's totally up to us, as we repaint in years to come.
Yeah, I just want it, folks on the list on TV, you know, this is your city, and we're trying to do things to help improve it and move it forward. Let's just be respectful of the property, and if you're going to spin out, do it at home. It costs money, it costs you money for us to repaint this thing. We ought not to have to repaint it every two months because it looks terrible.
Christina, just a point on the banners. I think they look great. They were very attractive. I noticed them one day, and I had mentioned this to the mayor. I would like for us to look at perhaps some kind of coordination with Almaral and Pfeiffer, that we come up with maybe some kind of banners welcoming them, or putting some banners of the school in conjunction with the city, maybe if we've got some.
Absolutely.
Money somewhere to kind of tag team with them.
We can definitely look into that. The fall banners that you'll see put out in the next couple of months are kind of like the brown color of our, the PMS colors are brown. We also looked at Main Street expansion down, down from Third Street, and you'll see the tree grates that we put in. We've tested some of the river rock and the tree grates, and this is kind of why we did that, so we could see which one we liked better. I don't know if council has any preference on the tree grates, but I think that our Public Works Department prefers the river rock over the tree grates because they're so, they're hard to custom around the trees.
You're talking about the top one versus the?
I like that one. That's probably. The one to the, the two on the far right are the ones that Public Works prefers better because they have to, the holes have to align up directly with where the tree is, and a lot of times that doesn't happen, so they have to shift the concrete around if it doesn't line up right, or it's kind of jagged looking.
I like the middle one the best of all, myself.
That allows for growth in the root ball. That's what Christina was talking about, Popworth was talking about. If you notice, some of them, they just grow differently, and you get a large root ball. So, if you look about the one on the left, you start having the grate ties it up toward the middle and, you know, have another issue. So, the one right in the middle, the mayor said he likes best, allows for that growth and still has a combination of the grate and the river rock.
So, this is what we'll slowly start implementing, you know, as time goes on throughout the entire city. We just wanted to test it out and see how it worked in that area since we were going ahead and expanding in that area.
So, Christina, you're saying the middle one is what we'll start seeing throughout?
This one, this one and/or this one here, these two.
Okay.
What's the cost on those grates?
Honestly, I have no idea. Public Works orders those for us, and I don't think Ninas or Ross. I can get back with you on an answer with that.
I think those grates, Councilmember Dry, are plastic, if I recall correctly, and they're a lot less expensive than the metal grates, that's for sure, but they're still not cheap, but we can find out.
They fade over time, being plastic?
I do not know. We'll try to find some of that out. So, if we go forward with them, that we know, we will get some use out of them, but they are cheaper than the metal.
We're not doing a whole lot of this this year, so this is not really, it's not something that we're asking for particular direction on this year, and when we get to that point, we can come back later. But we can get answers for you on those. We also, if you recall, we did a bicycle lane assessment, discussing moving the angled parking, removing the angled parking on Second Street. We had a net loss of six spaces. We had a merchant input session, and there was a lot of concerns with safety and parking options at that point in time, so this is something that we decided to push off to a later date. So, during this current year, we have $20,000 budgeted, and what we're trying to do is kind of the same thing that we did down Main Street on the opposite side, on East Main, but we're going to go down West Main from Depot to Railroad and install trees and benches and banners and trash cans to kind of broaden the feel of the downtown atmosphere in that area. We'll do a few tree base expansions in that area as well. As you saw last week, they already started on the downtown striping. I think it's complete at this point in time. And something that you saw on your agenda after this is the establishment of an art committee, and we'll talk about that in just a second, but this is an example, these two photos are an example of what we hope to do this year for some public art. ADDC is actually talking about enhancing one of the alleyways. It's not really something that's going to be our project. It's going to be one of their design committee projects, but that is an option that we may see done this year that will affect downtown Streetscape.
Council, remember, one of the alleyways that was recommended was the one you just saw, so that may be a good one for them to do something with.
That's the most visible.
That's, yeah. So, also too, we talked last year, or earlier this year, about the implementation of a pedestrian refuge at Market Station. This is something that DOT is putting in their spot safety funding, so it's kind of something that we're going to push off, and hopefully they will pick up that bug.
It's been resubmitted within the next couple of weeks, so we should hear pretty soon on that.
And these are, these are beyond the current year that we're in now, so we're also going to look at wayfinding signs and historical blades, and not in this current year, but in beyond these years. So, to date, we have spent about $126,000 of actual dollars spent, and another $31,000 in in-con labor and materials, and we're working in years one and three have been completed in the last year.
We got a lot of bang for those.
We did.
Yes, we did. Absolutely. So, that is the intent for this year, unless there's further direction from council. I'll stand by and answer any questions if y'all have any.
And that was some grant money, right?
There was. It was $94,000 in grant money.
Do that one more time, because I've heard people say, "We're spending city money on it." So, one more time, how much?
There was $94,000 that was designated towards economic development downtown that we had to spend.
Yeah.
It was.
Yes. And I guess because I've just heard this weekend, it's great, but we've heard this spending, and I said, "No, no, 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 no. That was a gift of money."
One thing we may want to think about down the road with, especially when Pfeiffer get on, come on board in some of the apartment complexes and stuff, is like a bike sharing program, like what you see like on university campuses, you know, just to kind of help them maneuver from point A to point B in the downtown area.
Be nice to have that bike lane.
Don't forget, that's a possibility down in the Pfeiffer.
Oh, yeah. Yes, it would. Citizens didn't want.
Do y'all have any other questions on Streetscape?
Yay, Christina.
Good job, Christina. Thank you. Very good. While I'm up there.
Stay right there, and let's do the number 18. Oh, you've got something else before we go?
No, that's what I was going to.
Let's move to number 18, discussion of the ad hoc downtown art committee.
So, we have, staff has met over, so in the Streetscape master plan, they recommended having some public art, and we thought that it was prudent to add some folks that, from the community, have a little more experience in art and have an interest in it. So, we put together the list of folks that you saw inside your agenda that primarily have interest in public art, and we've met several times. We've kind of got a plan in place to implement for this year, and also talking about subsequent years as well. The first, the first goals that we'll have is to come up with a specific area or areas and specific art projects for this current year, and then we also have talked about the creation of an art walk map, and then we're also discussing some 3D signature pieces specifically for Almaral. Obviously, we won't take any action unless council approves it, and we'll bring back recommendations from the committee, but just wanted to mention that to y'all so you knew what was going on, and if you had any other suggestions as to who might want to partake in this committee, we're open to ideas.
Love it.
I didn't see a representative on here from the Stanley County Arts Council, so, you know, I think it'd be wise to go in and at least allow them to sign a representative.
Representative, yeah. We can, we can reach out to them.
Yep.
ADDC is partnering with us with a lot of things, and I think we need to appreciate what they're doing to help us pay for some of these things, especially the baskets and the water reservoirs and all, and they've done a lot to help us down there, and they're working hard to improve their property right now, too, so.
We're going to try to earmark a couple thousand dollars out of what we have budgeted for the Streetscape to put in one of these murals for this year, so when we get to that point and trying to make a recommendation as to what the mural is or where we're going to put it, we'll bring that to y'all for further consideration.
Yay.
I noticed it's on here. We, since years back, we did the sculptures, talking about maybe three or four strategically located pieces of sculpture. Wouldn't be big stuff, but it'd be very, we had a great deal to that. So, I've seen it, I didn't see it on there in Starbuck, but I'm glad.
Roger Martin is actually on this ad hoc committee that we've established. He's, he's well-versed in this type of stuff, and he knows of a place that does traveling sculptures, and you, I think you pay $1,000 a year. So, we would have a piece that would be here for a year. We would have to pick a location for it. We paid $1,000, and then it would move the next year somewhere else. So, that's kind of what we're thinking about doing for this year, and we'll bring that to y'all for consideration when we get, when we get to that point.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 19, presentation of the fiscal year 1718 list for minimum housing code enforcement. What you have before you, like, council, is going to be a recommendation from the staff, and we have not started a ready-to-demo. This is just starting the process where we will get COG to come in and start the same process we start every year. It will be a lengthy process. We're probably looking at May, June next year before you're going to be looking at these things disappearing, but we've got a very aggressive program over the last year where we increased the number we're doing, and this again is an aggressive program. Trump?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess I'll second that. I don't know that we're really necessarily looking for any kind of motions or anything like that tonight, except for maybe your comments, approve, disapprove, that type of stuff, but I'll give you, I want to give you a little bit of a summary, starting with this year, with last year, fiscal year 2016 to 17, minimum housing, and rather than calling it demolition, since we're burning them down and really abating the problem, we're calling this a dilapidated housing abatement summary. So, with our program last year, we had a total of 11 houses on the list. There was 10 new houses that were added, as well as one remaining from fiscal year 1516. Of those 11, we had one house that was demolished by homeowner. The house adjacent to that was actually repaired by the homeowner, so those were removed from the list, and we had one house that had significant repair work underway. We also had eight houses demolished or burned, so five sites are completed, and I should actually say it's seven sites now as of tonight, as of yesterday, and we got one cleanup underway scheduled at the Blanch Street property, if anybody went out there for that burn. So, we had originally in the budget $46,000. The total expenditure through 201617 through July 1 was $32,600, and as you'll see in the next agenda item, staff's actually requesting for $7,500 of that be rolled over to this fiscal year to complete the, pay for the cleanups on those last three, which actually comes out to exactly $7,500, so it worked out perfectly for us. So, that would leave us with one house remaining out of those original 11, and we'll go ahead and take credit for those other two that the property owner did. The, I also want to talk about something else before we get into this year. I wanted to summarize our deteriorated housing abatement summary, and really, I think, when I got here at least, I think most of the minimum housing work that we had done dealt primarily with tearing houses down, demolishing them. The state statute on minimum housing separates into two different categories. There's a deteriorated and a dilapidated, and that's usually on one side or the other of the 50% value of the, of the house, that threshold there. So, we've got, on this deteriorated housing abatement summary, these are, these are minimum housing complaints that we get. They're houses that we've seen that we don't think are quite there yet, or that we're trying to get something done on before they get to the point where they're going to need to be torn down, but we're trying to, slowly trying to get the ball moving towards actually taking care of and getting houses actually fixed up. And as it is slow-going, we can only handle a few of them every quarter, but we have, last year, we took on a total of 14 cases, and that was actually a little bit less than a year. We started doing this in earnest in fall of 2016. We had six houses that were repaired. They were reinspected and removed from the list. We've got five houses that have reinspection scheduled on them. Four of them, we do expect those to probably still be in violation. We haven't seen a whole lot of work going on on those, and we have three houses that are awaiting an initial inspection and hearing at this point. So, just to kind of fill you in on where we're at with that, we're trying to get a little bit of work done on them before they get to the point where we have to spend city funds in demolition. Moving on to next year, the proposed minimum housing, dilapidated housing abatements. We're proposing, we are being ambitious this year. We're proposing a total of 15 houses, 14 of them new, one of them being a rollover from last year. We do have a slightly, a little bit higher budget of $48,000 for this year, and of those 15, we really just, we really expect to probably be able to get about 10 or 11 of these houses, hopefully more, could possibly be a little bit less, but we anticipate that 10 or 11 of them, 10 or 11 of them will actually be able to be removed, and then we'll probably have about four or five that'll be alternates, and the plan is to go ahead and do inspections on all these, and so we know exactly where we stand on each one. Go ahead and get an ordinance done if we can, and then that year, that way next year when it rolls around, we've already got some of the, some of the legwork done on them, and we can, we can pretty much get rocking and rolling on those early on in the year. You'll see the list here, and I'll go through, I'll go through these in the PowerPoint for you in just a second here.
Council, I want to mention also, where Kevin mentioned the 48. Actually, we're spending about $70,000 a year on this program, the money we spend COG to administer the program, the $7,500 that he has in budget amendment for tonight, and the 48 already in the budget. So, we're going to spend about $70,000 next year on this, this program.
You know, we averaged, last year, we averaged, we did come in under budget total. We did average about $5,000 a house last year. we did average about five thousand a house last year. I, I think we got a little bit lucky on some of them, we got some, some good deals on some of the demolitions that happened, we're burning a bunch more, which is helpful, and we really didn't have that much in asbestos remediation cost, which was, which was great. So, real quick, everybody in the audience isn't gonna be able to see this, this is a kind of an eleven-by-seventeen size, size document here, but this is the, this probably needs to be updated from the past couple days, but this is our, our working list that we deal with, with demos, so you can see everything that's in the green or the brown has either been repaired or taken care of by the property owner, everything in the gray has been removed by the city, and then everything in the yellow is what we're planning on for next year, and then you can see our growing list down below there as well.
That list is gonna continue to grow because we have a lot more to add to it.
Yeah, I mean, every, every, you know, I mean, all, all day long, we go around and look at stuff, there's several that could be added in, so it's, you know, it is a little bit difficult to prioritize these.
And this is residential only.
Residential.
And I think we've got a really, I mean, I, I need to-
Right.
-reiterate that sometimes.
Right, at this time, we're not doing commercial maintenance.
This is residential only.
The ones in white that have been added on, those will be deteriorated?
No, there's a couple of those that are, that are, we're working on as deteriorated. We went ahead and put them on there because they're probably gonna end up, they, well, they could end up in that list eventually, but most of those that you see in the white are ones that also are probably gonna need to come down, and we just, we can't get to them all.
A couple on there I've been seeing and watching, and-
Yeah.
They're not to the point where we can tear them down.
Right.
What are we doing with those? I mean, you-
We're doing the deteriorated, we're actually, we send them through the same exact process that we send through the, the, the dilapidated housing through. We get a complaint about them, we do an initial inspection, and we'll, we'll send that on to, to James Luster, and Luster will start the process with the hearings with them, and what we're gonna end up having to do is actually probably eventually issue citations and find the property owners. I found that that's kind of the breakdown from where we tried to do it before, there was just no follow-through on that end, and so we're trying to, trying to do that now. Might be a little bit heavy-handed, but we've got to, I mean, we've really got to get some people to invest in their properties and to fix their properties up, because these, some of these neighborhoods are just gonna continue to decline.
As you have opportunities to talk to people with COG, especially the director when he comes onboard, or he, she, whenever, well, that's one of the things we need to point out to them, that James Luster needs some assistance. He is snowed under and cannot move quickly because he has so much to do. I had a survey from COG just recently, and I put that on that survey, that he, that we need some more help in that area.
Is he the only one that does this?
Yes.
Is he the only one?
What do other cities do?
He's, he's, he's the only one that does it for us. He's, he's, I actually, I, I brought, I pulled Nosser in, and Nosser's doing a lot of the administrative stuff, you know, taking the phone call, getting the thing started, you know, following up afterwards, but we actually need, we actually need James, we need somebody at least with a Inspector One, or something like, that's certified at some level such as that, to actually do these inspections, and he, he fulfills that need. But, you know, he, he does this for other municipalities as well, it's not just us, so we, we, we are having to share his time, and, and he is over, he is overworked, I mean, he's got a lot of, a lot of cases coming in over there, so. I'm gonna run through these real quick, I don't want to spend too long on them, if anybody wants me to stop on anything, let me know. We've, of course, we've got more pictures of these in our files, if anybody wants anything else, I tried to keep it somewhat short. You'll see that the list there, we have four on Area Avenue, it's, as a whole, probably one of our worst streets, I think, and we're, we're, we're getting, we're getting there with it slowly but surely, but that's, that's part of the reason why there's so many there. This one's at four twenty-eight Ari, and it's on the same property as this one right here at eleven forty Gibson Street, so we'll probably try to do those at the same time. Moving down Ari, there's, there's three or four of these down towards the end of the block there that are, the end of the street there that are in, in pretty horrible shape. This one at five thirteen, this one at five nineteen, I mean, some of these you can't even really see much on. Five twenty-seven, this one, there may actually be a tenant in here right now, so we'll need to, that may take a little bit longer on the enforcement side of that, and then next to that five thirty-one Ari, which is, again, is completely overgrown. Four twenty-five East Oakwood, this one's been boarded for a while, I believe the owner has, has just passed on, and it's just been, I don't know if anybody ever went through probate, nobody ever got it, I'm not sure what the deal is. That's the case of a lot of these properties, a lot of them, it's, it's, you know, absentee land, landlords, they, they live out of town, or they've, they're deceased, and there's just nobody to take care of the properties anymore. Anyway, they're, they're, this one is missing, hard to see, but is, looking through this window, but it's missing the flooring over the back half of the prop, the house there. I didn't think this originally would probably be a tear-down, and it's one that we'll still have to have Luster have a look at and see, but I think the fact that it's missing the flooring and some of the structural issues that are going on with it's probably gonna reach that point. There is some, you can see on the inside, there's some gang activity that, or somebody that thought they were in a gang at least, in there, I'm not sure. This is seven oh-three Eford Street, this was a, a meth lab at one point, so we will have to probably do a little bit extra in terms of inspection and abatement on the proper, on the house, just to make sure that doesn't harm anybody, but this would be a good eligible one for, to be burned. It's also very noticeable, it's something people see coming right down the highway all the time, this is over right across from Palermo's. Nine oh-six Elizabeth Avenue, this one previously had a fire, probably just need to finish it off, I guess. Eight oh-two Hill Street, this is, these are on two separate lots, but they're, they're basically twins, I mean, they're, they're very, very old mill houses, one right next to the other, and you can see the shape, the condition, there's, in addition to the internal stuff, there, there's issues with the roof, there's issues with the piers, those are, some of those are about to buckle, so I would imagine the next few years, part of this house is gonna fall in on itself. This house, a little bit better condition, but still pretty bad. Fourteen oh-four Pennington Road, this is, this is one that we carried over from last year. As you can see, they started some work on this, they replaced some windows, they took some siding off, I guess, to, with the intention of fixing it, and it has just stopped, nothing's happened there for six months. I have spoken with the owner, he wasn't, you know, he actually, you know, told me that, you know, he invested the money in it, and it kind of felt like it wasn't really gonna, it was bad money spent on the house, and I guess that's why nothing else has been done, but we probably need to go ahead and take care of this one this year, this would be the first one I recommend we do. Six oh-eight Summit Avenue, again, I think this one may be in the floodplain, it is really overgrown, bad shape, and that actually should-
That's Highway fifty-
That should say Highway fifty-two, sorry, I didn't change that. So, Highway fifty, this is fifteen oh-eight, I believe, Highway fifty-two, this is questionable one, I'm, I'm not sure about the structural integrity of the house, if it's, typically when there's, there's a structural issue, it's very easy to meet that fifty percent threshold. A lot of times, even though a house looks really bad on the inside, it's, the cosmetic stuff just really isn't all that expensive to fix, but this one, I think, is, is probably right on the border there. I do worry about there being some possible asbestos and some other expenses to take care of with this one, so it could be a very expensive house, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through the process with it, see what happens, and, and, and see if it's, it's one we wanna, we wanna keep up there at the top in terms of priority. And the last one, fifteen ten Main Street, as you can see, this is a picture before, I think, this is a picture, it's actually on the tax records right now, it has been cut back a little bit, it's not quite as bad, but the, there's severe damage to the roof, and especially going around the side of the house there, the roof is in very bad condition, part of it's falling in, there is, there is damage to the windows and doors, and it's been vacant for quite some time, too, I believe, so.
Is that beside the one we just-
This is actually, this is two doors down from the other one, right. The other one that you mentioned there, in between these two, is on the list also, but it's, it's probably one we'll want to get in another year or two.
Now, staff, I want to congratulate you on what you're doing, there's a lot there to do, and I know not everybody thinks that we're doing what we should, but I think that you're very aggressive on what you're doing, you're doing many more, and unfortunately, we're gonna see more and more with multiple houses each year, as this list shows this year, that we, we can't control that. We try to get the worst houses first and move forward, we know that we can address, and I appreciate what you do, and I think council does, too.
Absolutely.
Council have any questions, Mr. Robinson?
Mayor, I just noticed whenever you was talking about one of the properties, Mr. Henson back there had his hand up, is it appropriate for him to say whatever he had to say?
He's welcome to speak, we're not having any public hearing on any particular property, but he's welcome to say anything.
We don't see him often, so, and-
I think he's going to speak to Kevin and Nosser after the meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Counsel have any further questions?
In the question, but, but I, I get hit up with this all the time, about we need to tear down more, tear down more, and I think we need to emphasize the importance of the issue when you're dealing with a man or woman's private property. That's a serious matter in this country, and I, we're taking it seriously, and I think that, that's what, when people jump onto us about it, I think we need to emphasize that, of just how drastic it is.
Well, and I-
Go in and, and exercise some authority over someone's private property.
And, and I think it would be, I mean, to that point, I mean, I think that's, that's, that's part of the reason this takes so long, I mean, there is a, there is a process to it-
I'm glad it does.
And rightfully so, yeah, but it, it is expensive, there is a process to it, and it does take a while, and it is to make sure that we give every property owner, you know, a chance to do what needs to be done on it, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's not our goal to go in there, we, we wish everybody would come and fix the houses up, it's not our goal to go in there and tear them down, certainly, so.
Kevin, out of those ten, eleven that you mentioned as potential candidates that we'll, we might target, how many of them look like candidates for training burns?
Uh, I, right now, all these can be burned, there's some that the fire department would, would prefer over others, but we, that was, we, we tried to prioritize this year, one being spreading it out, making sure these weren't all-in-one neighborhood, that we did different sections of town, because every section of town needs, needs a little bit of, of care. We prioritize by that, we prioritize by kind of their visibility, I mean, there's some that, I mean, it just really sends a bad image coming into town when you see them, you know, and then whether they're able to be burned, and, you know, other significant costs and everything, we tried to create a, a listing and prioritize them according to that, so.
Mr. Alder?
Kevin, the house that you were talking about on fifteen eighteen U.S. Highway Fifty-two North, you said that may or may not be able for-
Yeah.
-demolition?
I don't know yet, yeah.
Okay. What, what will be the next steps in determining if it would be?
Uh, we'll start the, the, the process is very, I mean, it's the same, no matter what you do, I mean, it's a minimum housing process, so we'll, we'll get that started, we'll get, we'll do a title search, and we'll have James contact the, the property owner, in this case, it's, it's Sonny Beecham, I believe, so he's not that hard to get in touch with, and we've spoken with him about it before, and James will go in and, and he'll do an inspection of the property, determine what needs to be done. At that point, he can usually tell you whether or not, you know, hey, this is, this is something that's over fifty percent gone, and, you know, we may want to pursue this, you know, this ordinance to demolish it, or we just need to get it repaired, but in either case, the property owner will, after that, will have a, a thirty to ninety-day window to make the necessary repairs.
And to the point that you made a minute ago about the house on Eford Street being highly visible, I think of all the houses on the list, that's probably the most visible because it's right on Highway Fifty-two.
The one on Eford Street?
No, no, well, yeah, the ones that come out with visible, Eford Street.
Yeah, the Highway Fifty-two houses, too, yeah.
Yeah, because that's, everybody that comes in, you know, south on Fifty-two, they're coming right past that, so that's definitely-
Right, absolutely.
An eyesore.
Counsel have any further questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, prior to two thousand thirteen, I'm sure we have records as to houses that were demolished-
Mm-hmm.
-prior to two thousand thirteen, and then from two thousand thirteen to, to this point, just curious. You can't ask right now, I understand that, but if you could-
We do have some records, they're not, they're, they're shoddy, but they're, I mean, they're in there, a lot of them are just paper records and everything, I have to go through and actually pull those, so, are you, are you curious about an actual number that was done, or?
Yeah, just what's been done. I mean, we're, we're facing a lot of houses to be torn down, especially in older sections of Albemarle, which were built in the nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, and nineteen forties.
Some of them came over here from Baton.
That's why I give this council credit, Mr. Dry, we were only, only doing three to four houses a year, and this council has become much more aggressive trying to address a, very much a backlog of these houses. It's gonna take some time, it's gonna take several more years to get these, these large numbers worked out, but we're working on them, and Kevin is now trying to get them before they get into this shape.
That's the part that I like the best, I mean, it's frustrating that we can't, you know, get these cleared, some of them are beyond repair, but some of the ones, the one that bothers me the most that I see is across from Snap, that house on the corner. That, I don't know what condition it's in.
It's on our list, yeah, it's on our list, it's getting worse.
At one time, that was a beautiful house.
And, and to be honest, that's, that, those are the most frustrating for staff, too, because there are a lot of them, times, they're, they're historic houses-
Right.
-or they should be historic, they're some of the older properties, and they can be salvaged, and nobody's doing anything about it, you know, some of those that are, we've got some that are too far gone-
Yeah.
-you know, okay, whatever, but, you know, it's, it's, it's tough to just not even be able to get in touch with anybody, or not have anybody care about them, so.
At least y'all have put in effort.
And it's bad, and it's bad for the whole neighborhood, I mean, you get that one seed of blight there, and it spreads, you know?
I know it's manpower and money, but to at least put forth an effort to try to catch them before they get to the point of all these-
Right, absolutely.
-what we need to be doing.
Yeah.
I, I have to swallow a lot of things I've said in the past, but I, I do think it's time that we moved ahead on our commercial maintenance code. I, I've talked against it because I felt we weren't, didn't have the funds or the manpower to do this completely, and I, I, I don't think we can hold off much longer on that commercial maintenance, because I would encourage us to, to look into that.
That's one thing we probably need to visit during this year before budget time, and if council's gonna look at that, now, it, it's gonna be tough to come up with a lot more funds to do that, it may be that you have to not do as many residential in order to do some commercials, so it's gonna, just be, councils might have to decide what their priorities are and how they want to move forward.
Mm-hmm. One quick thing, sorry, I know the mayor had acknowledged and recognized the contribution of Kevin and the planning staff for their organization and aggressiveness in this project, I just also want to, you know, commend Christina off and Assistant City Manager, if you remember, about a year ago, she was up here talking about a new process and, and involving the fire department, and trying to look at things and do things differently to be able to address a greater number of houses, so also, in the audience is Battalion Chief Kenny Kendall, from the fire department side, Kenny has coordinated all of that, working real closely with Kevin, with Christina, and it's been a lot different effort, and a lot more involved effort than what we've seen in the past, so the fire department has obviously been involved, Public Works has been involved in some cleanups, things that we had not had in the past that has allowed us to address, you know, triple or quadruple the amount of houses we've had in any previous single year, so just want to recognize Kenny for that as well.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it really is a, a team effort, we've got five or six different people from the city and Central Island working on these and everything to make this happen, so, yeah.
On those burns, are we using other fire departments? I read somewhere in a department report, in county, or?
Uh, the city's actually, the, uh, city fire department's actually able to bring in other fire departments in on the training, yeah.
I'm sure they like that.
The one up on Blanch Street, there was Bethany, what was up there?
New London.
New London, Bethany, and they all had parts to do in that burn. If you haven't been, when you really need to go, I mean, when they talk about it, that's the way it happens, it's amazing how they can control that fire.
Mm-hmm. It turns into a neighborhood event, everybody comes in.
And let me mention one more, in case you get a complaint, the one beside a Speedway on Fifty-two North, it was a burn, but that is not one of ours that we're doing, we did burn it, if I'm right.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, nothing's-
The property owner to clean up the remnants, not us.
Right, yeah, nothing's preventing the, the property owner, any property owner, from volunteering, you know, to the, speak with the fire department about the stuff, so, yeah.
We, we did that, we, we volunteered, and, and there were people from the state of Washington, California, Europe, Australia, here to observe that, they started and stopped at that seven times, with cameras all over that house. It was an international affair.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am the entertainer motion that we excuse Ms. Hall. She went to attend a public hearing at the county's meeting.
Motion, excuse me.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 19 is President's fiscal year 1718, wait, no, excuse me, number 20, Ordinance 1727 is to amend the fiscal year 1718 budget. You heard Mr. Robinson mention that. There's also some requests for some containers and white goods that we need to budget, where we got money from the state, we have to budget. There's a Parks and Rec, we need to do some finish painting for the windows that didn't get finished in the last budget. It's just, money's already been appropriated, but we've got to re-appropriate it into this budget year.
Move to second.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 21 is Ordinance 1728 to establish a project budget for the HUD fiscal year 2017 capital fund program in the Department of Public Housing. Mr. Bob, would you like to come forward and tell us what you're going to do?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. If you can recall, back a couple of months ago, I presented our agency plan update, which included our capital fund projects that we had planned for 2017 fiscal year. And we recently received our funding from HUD for those capital fund, funds, and within those capital funds, we would like to purchase some new software for our housing, our housing computers, do some staff training, pay for our A and E fees and our agency plan update fees. And we also would like to begin the beginning phases of constructing our family life center in Amherst Gardens.
Explain that in detail, please, sir.
Yes, sir. The, in my memo, I did omit a site improvement of $50,000, so that amount doesn't add up, that's in my memo. That was my error. But $50,000 of that would go to grading, paving, and fencing the area that we were looking to build in. And the non-doubling structure, the 161,521,000, we were looking at beginning the architectural design and with our A and E company and bringing those back to council for your consideration. Once, you know, you guys are in agreement with what we designed, we would begin the beginning phases of construction as far as the building with the foundation and things like that. But we, and the $50,000 would go towards grading and paving and fencing for the area.
And their location is?
Location would be in the ball field at the, at the end of South Bell, in, what, South Bell and Inger, the baseball field that we have up there. We have, I can't remember how many acres that is, but we have a really big spot out there that.
In the field or in the woods, where you're talking about?
Actually, we would take part of the field closest to where you first come into the field. Right now, I think you've seen, we have a garden, a community garden in that area. We would look to build in that area there.
And this would in turn allow us to bring the other family life center back online as apartments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Put that back online for a family to actually live in.
So there's nothing in HUD that says you have to have some type of recreation facility on site?
Not necessarily that on site, but we do try to offer a area where we can offer our family self-sufficiency programs and have meeting spaces for our residents' council and community watch groups and our local Boy Scout, Girl Scout groups that we have, and other training, resident training initiatives that we have. We have a, we use our family life center that we have now for those types of things, but it's just, like I say, it's actually an apartment, a five-bedroom apartment, so it's not really suitable for the activities and things that we, we would like to see within the community.
Is that ball field used much?
We use it for our resident appreciation service that we have once a year. We, we do have requests for people to do little functions in there, but as far as the actual baseball field, it's not used at all for a baseball field.
Is that going to leave some of the site available for?
It would actually, a large portion of it would still be available for outdoor activities in that area as well, so. We are looking at about a third of what's out there to be taken up by the family life center.
Including parking and everything?
Yes.
About how many square foot are you looking at in this family life center?
We, we hadn't really gotten to the drawings of it yet. Our A and E company was waiting to see what type of funds we would be given for our capital fund. And so now he's gonna, now that we've been, presented our, our funds, he's gonna start with some preliminary drawings and, and getting some feedback from staff and as far as what's needed in the building to see exactly how big it needs to be.
But you plan on stretching your capital funds out over a couple of years?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It would, it would take, I think, from the initial estimate that we were given, it would probably be two, plus, two years plus this, this year's of capital fund funding.
Motion to approve Ordinance 17-28.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Number 22, proposed golf court ordinance is in your agenda. The council requested this at the last meeting. The police chief got this from one of the other cities, and it pretty much meets our requirements if council wishes to proceed with it. One thing we do need to decide is on the fee for the annual license.
One question I had was, it says that a person would need to be 16, does not say they have to have a valid driver's license.
That's state law. That's exactly what it says in state law.
They have to have a valid driver's license?
No.
They do not?
No.
I thought I looked at Oakwood's, and I thought they did.
Now, you can require that. It is not required in state law, and this is modeled after state law. Now, if council decides they want to do that, that's totally a view. We tried to model it after state law and after basically what most of the beaches do. They do not require driver's license.
I thought they did.
They do?
One of the things we need to keep in mind, that all the streets from the center of the city are 35 miles an hour of length. We could create a monster. Because these are, we're fighting this out at the beach in our property down there, and there are communities down there that it is, it is a monster. And if we get a bunch of those things zipping around downtown, and you try to drive through, it can be a problem.
This is totally council's decision. We were asked to bring it forward.
I'm with Councilmember Whitley. I think if we approve this thing, we need, we need to make sure that the people have valid driver's license. That's what I.
If you're going to drive on the street and obey traffic signals and traffic signs.
You're going to put other people in danger.
I think a lot of the intention was, and I'll let the police chief correct me if I'm wrong, was, was to allow this for elderly citizens that no longer have a driving license, they can drive these golf carts, especially around the beach and area. It's totally up to council. You don't have to drop, to even do one at all. This was the, what we were asked to bring forward.
Personally, I don't think we're ready to go into this thing yet. There's, to me, there's a little more, there's a lot more research that needs to be done. You know, to Councilmember Bramlett's point of view, I mean, we've got two cross streets and one coming down that's major. And, you know, is this confined to the interior city limits of Albemarle, or does it go all the way from sign to sign to sign? So if I had one and I jumped on 2427 to get downtown?
Law says you can't be on a 45. Only 35 and under.
Okay. What if you have a?
I would recommend before we take action on this, since it was at the request of Councilmember Hall. I don't know if she's speaking for us at the public hearing or whatever that she went to. I would recommend that we at least give her an opportunity to be present and have some input before we take action on this.
She probably brought this up because we've had some requests for it. We said, if council wants to table it, we have no problem.
If you need a motion, I'll move that we table.
Councilmember Dry moves that we table it to the September meeting.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, do you want further research, and if so, what kind of research do you want?
In the meantime, let's, let's research on some of the criteria, like what's been mentioned here tonight, you know, what are some of the fees that municipalities, whoever you check with, what, Baden, Norwood, Locust, whoever, see what they charge for fees or what.
You would like to see more sample ordinances, is that basically what you want to say?
Yeah, and just, you know, all-inclusive, you know, all the rules, the entire policy. Excuse me?
You would like to see something for a lot, for some larger cities also, not just the small cities?
Right, right.
I'd say comparable to our size.
We can do it from the list serve.
Sure, sure. No problem. Number 23, in the discussion of activities on Lincoln Street, I think Mr. Townsend asked for this to be on the agenda.
Yes, I did. This is nothing new to council or the police chief, police department. This is something that I've been bringing up since 2013. It's a matter, you know, just like we discussed earlier, whenever we said that we get calls and complaints and stuff from the constituents on the recycling, I continue to get these same calls and stuff from my constituents regarding gunshots, loud music, all kinds of disturbances, blocked driveways, and things of that nature because of, in particular, one facility that continues to operate illegally. And this has been going on since 2013. And when I last brought this up, I think council took action to proceed the contract with a agency or something, something of that nature to address similar situations, and we moved forward on another piece of property in the city. And lost focus on why the issue came up, which was on Lincoln Street. I just want to bring this back to council's attention and let you know that the problem is still there, and we need to address it in some manner.
I don't recall what. This is the ish, the house that had the loud parties, alcohol, drugs.
You name it.
It's the same street that these folks are going to be on Saturday?
No, it's a different portion of the street.
Cross from it, thank goodness.
I was thinking this resolved itself. I was thinking that something happened and that.
They did make some arrests over there, but I don't know that it's ever totally been resolved, though.
I know, I know that the city, I know we can get aggressive when we want to get aggressive, because the excuse that I've been hearing is we got to allow the law time to take its, take its course. But somehow, with this other property that we brought up four, five months ago, or six months ago, it's like we've done, moved very aggressively and got a lot of results in a short period of time. And we got even worse situations that go on on a, every weekend basis, 3, 4, and 5 o'clock in the morning. And it's getting to a point now where the citizens are getting what they've been fed up. You know, I just think it's time for us to get down to business and take care of business.
What's your recommendation that we?
Well, that's why we, that's why we hire police chief and police department. I leave that in the hands. If it's illegal activity, I'm not going to make any recommendations. I leave that in their hands.
Do we need a motion or something? I think we need to allow them to do some, see if the documentation is there to proceed, just like we did on that other property that Mr. Townsend brought up. If we've got the documentation, they'll have to do the research and get with the investigative agency to tell us where we can proceed or not. I think that would be our next step, is, in my opinion. Let's see what we have there that we can document. Let's do it. All right. Number 24, consideration to fill the vacancies for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This was on your agenda before, and unless Ms. Kaiser has some recommendations, or council has some, we have nobody to choose for these positions right now. One's number two, one's number four, I believe. District two and district four.
I spoke with the city manager yesterday. We do have someone on the Park and Recreation Board that was at large but now lives in District Two in just the past year or so. Didn't know if that would be something that we could flip-flop, flip-flop, whatever. I don't know. Just something I threw out to him. They live over on Fernwood, or Hazelwood.
We could always move them to, as a district seat if we, if council so chose, but then you still have to find somebody for an at-large seat too. And we have nobody on our waiting list for any, for any position.
Yeah, at-large would seem to me a little easier than what I run into sometimes over in my district.
If you want to make a motion, I'll entertain it.
I move that, we move Julie Snyder from at-large to the Parks and Recreation for District Two.
Have a motion to move Julie Snyder from at-large to District Two?
Second.
And would that also include her period starting over at this time?
I think that would be something we'd have to ask her about. I don't know. You know, I can only do so much.
Well, I would say yes, and if she, if she decides she wants off, she can always resign.
Right, okay. I'll put that in there too, sorry.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That leaves us, we still need a representative from District Four, and now we need an at-large representative. I would encourage anybody interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to please come forward, contact Ms. Kaiser, or send in one of our forms that is available on our website that you have an interest, and we will see if we can fill those other positions. Otherwise, until we have somebody to appoint, we will leave this off the agenda until we get somebody that we can, can use, or will qualify for it. Is that correct, Ms. Kaiser? Okay. Mr. Ferris?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. Number 25, Resolution 1725 to support keeping JCPenney Store 2296 in Albemarle open.
I move adoption as an.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
I'll pass the resolution around if everyone would sign. Just make sure I get it back.
Number 26, is consider attendance at the Stanley County Cog Meeting in Baden. I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
Looks like everyone is.
Where is it, in Baden?
It's in Baden. It's going to be at the end, Baden End.
So since it's in Baden, do we all just want to meet?
I'd say meet. I don't think there's any use in driving, second. I'm driving again. Number 27, consider setting a meeting date of Monday, September 11th, at 6:00 p.m. to meet with Creative Economic Development and Convergent Nonprofit Solutions. This will be an off Monday for us, and it works out, we can make this date work for both of them, where we won't have to have two meetings, we can do it all in one night. We'll have one, and then we'll do the other. Counsel, have any problems with that?
I may have. I think Gene's got a certain schedule that day. I will try to get that in before, but I can't promise you.
I would envision that meeting probably lasting close to two hours, I would say. Okay, well, what we'll do, we'll, we'll adjourn to that after our September meeting, if council's all good with that. Number 28, information to 2017 Electronics Recycling and Document Shredding Event is on September the 16th. Number 29, information, our updates for the Code of Ordinances are now available. I don't know how many of you still have books. I saw Ms. Hughes bring her in. I use mine on computer, so I don't have a book anymore. But if you do have a book, bring it in, and Ms. Bowers will be glad to update it. All right, we had two additions after number 29. One was, we need to designate a voting member or voting delegate. One was, we need to designate a voting member or voting delegate and someone to serve in his absence if they're not there for the North Carolina League of Municipalities meeting. Mr. Townsend has been that delegate for the last several meetings, I believe. And are you signed up to go, Mr. Townsend?
I don't, no.
Is he signed up to go? Since September? I believe he is.
I think I was the delegate last year.
He is.
Oh, you was?
Okay.
Okay, you was the delegate last year?
Yeah.
Well, council, I'll entertain a motion for a delegate and a backup delegate. I think, uh-
Are you everybody but Ms. Hughes?
Are you, Mr. Aldridge? Mr. Aldridge and Mr. Dry, the rest of us are calling. Anyone want to make a motion? That's the league meeting in Greenville.
Number eight, Mr. Whitley to be our delegate.
Second. I'll have a motion, Councilmember Townsend, to make Mr. Whitley our delegate. And a second by Mr. Dry. Do anybody, you want to add a?
I'll amend that and add Dr. Bramlett as the backup.
All right.
Oh, you can't be there?
Oh, you're not?
You can nominate yourself.
Well, I ain't going to do that.
All right. I have a motion to make Mr. Whitley our delegate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Now, I'll entertain a motion that would make Mr. Townsend the-
So moved.
Second.
Backup delegate. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right. Mr. Ferris is passing around a contract from DOT. This came in after the agenda was put up, put together, but they need it back before our next meeting. And this is a contract to do the work on Leonard Avenue that we have been discussing now for some time. The contract will be a formal price of $45,000, all-inclusive, with exception unless we run into a utility issue. And that's pretty much what we were talking about before. They will actually do the widening on the Saksby side out of lane. When you come out then, there'll be a right turn lane, a middle lane that will be left turn and straight, and then the, another left-hand lane all the way against the island. So there'd be three lanes coming out from the Saksby side. They would also change the design across the street slightly to allow for the traffic coming straight across to merge in. They would also add the sidewalk part that we did not do, knowing that this was coming forward. And they would also pave back to the location we stopped with our paving. That was our discussion with them and that's what we understand they have proposed in there. After we sign this, and then they are able to get their right-ofways secured. They hope to start sometime, probably next spring or somewhere in that neighborhood with the actual construction. We do not want them doing it during Christmas season, so they've agreed that they would start it next year.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion that we approve this contract. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Whitley. Anyone have any questions?
Do we know why this amount is significantly different from what we were thinking?
You remember, we, we actually got a quote. And then Senator McGinnis, we went to him and he helped us secure $125,000 to go toward this project. So we will only owe $45,000 now, rather than the entire thing ourself, we will only owe that. And we got to thank Senator McGinnis for getting that money for us.
Councilmember Whitley, also, he might be recalling from when we, you know, we initially started studying it ourselves. And I think the quote was something like 150, 160, up to maybe 250. But that took into account other options that we weren't sure were going to be wanted or required. And so, for example, one of the options would have been just to add a full new blend-in lane on the Office Mac side. That didn't take place. So right there, that, that saved significant amount of construction and moving the hotbox out front and relocation of traffic signals. So the range was pretty wide because it hadn't been engineered, this issue with DUT hadn't been resolved. So that's why the range was so wide. But from that range, the total project cost is now wound up on the lower end of the cost spectrum. And then with what the mayor was able to secure through Senator McGinnis's office, our share is significantly lower.
So this is over and above what Senator McGinnis got?
That's correct.
So, 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 Mary, we got the dedicated left turn coming out of Walmart. Are they still going to have that part down there by, where they keep the storage buildings coming off McLaughlin, you know, like they got in Locust, you know, how?
Okay.
We got that dedicated-
McLaughlin, are you talking about?
You know, where you come off down there?
You're talking about Spalding?
Spalding, Spalding.
Okay. Yeah, that's not the same project, but they are, what they're going to do is incorporate our project in with theirs. And it will come down here immediately and with a turnaround.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're going to bring it all the way to Spalding.
And, okay, I'm making, okay, all right.
But that, that's DOT's project there. That's not involving anything.
Yeah, okay.
I believe I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries.
Your Honor, if I may, it's appropriate, let's send Senator McGinnis a thank you note for his help in securing this amount of money for us. It's certainly been nice to have him as a workable ally and helping us out on many, many issues that have come before us. And I think it's time we say thank you for a job well done.
I think, I think we should too. We, we've done that as a initial thank you, but I think now that it's formalized, we should do that again. Thank you.
Very good.
Coming around the table, I would do want to mention, we have a lot of events coming up in the near future. And there are going to be a lot of events on the same night. There's kind of been possible right now to avoid that. I know one of the next ones coming up is the event at the market station where we're going to host Pfeiffer and the community colleges. ADDC is actually putting on the event and we're involved with them, having a welcome-back night and having a band and food and things like that at, that night. That same night, unfortunately, there's a fundraiser at the Agricultural Center for, for the benefit of the ag center. That's being put on by California Toe Jam and Back and Dash. So I hate that it's the same night, but it is. Then come in September, on September 16th, the police department is going to do their community night out, I believe from four to eight that afternoon. That same night, there are four events. But we're going to run into that as we move forward, so hopefully it will be well-attended and we need to let everybody know and advertise what we're going to be doing. So he will also have music and food and games and things like that for the community. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of kids to attend. And we have in the past had a lot attend when we did it at the South Amma Park, so hopefully they'll come uptown.
We had a lot last year except it rained.
Yeah. Yes, if it hadn't rained, it would have lasted a little longer. Exactly right. Mr. Ferris, have anything?
I do have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
No comments.
Ms. Hughes?
No comments.
Mr. Aldridge? Mr. Dry?
There was a nice event, Councilmember Bramlett mentioned a few weeks ago, for Toby Webb. I think those of you that went, it was an outstanding program. Toby at 96 can still be heard blocks away, needless to say. And I don't know, those, I, I was a youngster then, but those were my heroes. And when we dressed up to play ball at Greenfield, we put their number on our father's T-shirts and got in trouble for that. But, you know, we're, we got a lot of folks that are getting a lot of age on them that have contributed so much to our, our city and our county. And let's just keep them in our prayers.
Thank you, brother.
That's it.
Mr. Whitley? Look, Mr. Bramlett? Anyone in the audience have anything to bring before council? Is our attorney come? I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, 3, 5, and 6 for consultation with the attorney, real estate, and discussion of personnel.
Some of them.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries.